is called to order, the pledge will be led by Board Member Amy Johnson.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Welcome to the June 21 meeting, the last meeting of the 2021-22 school year. That's the last regularly scheduled meeting. Roll call, Mrs. Vaughn.
Chairman, we are missing Amy Johnson this evening.
Thank you so much. Approval of agenda. Do I have a recommendation to approve the agenda as presented?
So.
A motion by Sid Hill, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Amy Johnson. Any questions? Any comments, questions, discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed? Mrs. Vaughn?
It's all in favor, Chairman.
Very good. Special items, Dr. Stevens.
Yes, this is audience participation, so I'm going to start by singing something and I'm going to point to you and you're going to finish. Here we go. Celebrate good times, come on! Okay, so those few that participated are in a similar age group as me, and apparently that's not very many of you. So this evening, we have many, many athletes to celebrate. You know, we love celebrating here in Telahoma City Schools, and it's fun to be the month of June, and although the previous school year has ended, there is so much happening. So first of all, we want to welcome Coach Brian Morris, Assistant Coaches Brandon Tooten and Harper Case forward, along with all of the Telahoma High School Wildcat baseball team that is able to join us this evening. Come on, come on, come on. Come on. Yes, yes. All right. Wow, that's a big group. So each one of you is going to receive a special couple of treats. It has been an exciting season. It was an exciting season for our baseball team. It was so much fun to go out and cheer for them, and the most entertaining thing for me, on a side note, is when they growl from the dugout, which I took a liking to and started doing myself when I was in the stands. But anyhow, the Telahoma High School baseball team had an incredible season this year, as the Wildcats concluded the 2022 campaign with a record of 27-15 and an appearance in the TSSAA state tournament for the first time since 2013. Additionally, the Wildcats won their first district title since 2014 and their first region championship since 2005, when I believe Coach Brian Morris was the pitcher for the Wildcats at that time. Is that true? Look at that, little history coming to life. Let's give them all a round of applause and congratulations. Thank you all for being here this evening and allowing us to recognize you in this small, small way. I know you may have places to go and things to do. Thank you for being here, y'all.
Thank you for being here. You all are welcome to exit the building, or you can stay in the hall or squeeze in here.
Now, we have quite a few students who we need to recognize and honor as they competed at the state level in track and field. We have middle school and high school students to recognize. We're going to start with some of our middle school students first, students that are here. When you hear your name, if you'll just come forward to the center area, there'll be a board member to greet you, to provide you with a couple of treats for you as we share about your successes. So first, at the middle school level, from East Middle, Brynlee Duncan. Brynlee won the 800-meter run and set a new TMSAA record. This is extraordinary, and I'm very sorry that she can't be with us tonight, but let us give Brynlee a round of applause. We also have Katie Grace Nichols. Katie Grace, are you here this evening? All right, great. Katie Grace Nichols placed sixth place in the 800-meter run. Now remember, this is at the state level. Woo! And then Katie Grace, come on up here, yeah. And then we have Andrew Carmack. If you're here, Andrew, come on forward. Here we go, Andrew. So he placed in two events. Andrew placed seventh in the long jump and seventh in the 200 dash. Congratulations to both of these. It's East Middle School State Track and Field winners. And now from West Middle School, continuing our middle school acknowledgement, Emerald Tillman. Emerald here today? All right, come on, come on. Emerald placed fourth place in the 400-meter run, and let me just say one more time, that's at the state level. Congratulations, Emerald. And then we have Emerald, Gina Stevens, Jocelyn Garcia, and Lillian Vilamar. They scored seventh place in the girls' four-by-two-hundred relay. Let's give them an acknowledgement. Congratulations to our middle school state track and field athletes. If you guys will stay together, Mr. Birdsong is going to take some photos. And now we are going to move on to the high school level. Congratulations to you all. And there are quite a few, so again, we're going to call you up front if you'll just remain while we go through all of these incredible athletes. Lilly Story. Is Lilly here this evening? There's Lilly. Lilly won first place in the state, also, by the way, in the 800-meter. This first-place win makes Lilly the first girls' running event champion in 33 years. And a little fun fact about that, that is how many years I have completed in my career in education. Wow, that's impressive, Lilly. And you're going to hear Lilly's name time or two again, so hang tight. Logan Crouch, if you will come forward. Logan. Logan earned second place in the state of Tennessee in the shot put. Congratulations, Logan. And Zane Haas, is Zane here with us this evening? Zane, what a story. Wow, finished third place in the Class AA State Decathlon and was the first Telahoma High School student to qualify for the state decathlon since 2014. Zane also finished seventh at the state meet in the triple jump. Congratulations to that. And Cam Robinson, come on down, Cam Robinson. Sixth place, sixth place in the discus throw. Congratulations, Cam. And will our pole vaulter come on down? Wesley Russell, is Wesley here? All right, well Wesley, summertime, so it's hard with everybody's schedule. Wesley Russell earned eighth place in the pole vault. Let's wish him well and congratulations. Now, we have a team of young ladies who earned seventh in the four-by-800 relay. That's Lilly Story, Ellie Uline, Jordan Spry, and Aubrey Sorabi. Sorabi, my apologies, Sorabi. Yes, come on, come on. Cookies galore, cookies galore, absolutely. Then we have a four-by-400 relay team, fifth, and this is Lilly Story, Ellie Uline, Eleanor Foltz, and Sarah Aiken. Congratulations to all four of them. Got a big crew of track and field athletes here this evening. Then we also have for our boys, four-by-two-hundred relay. Congratulations to Logan Prosser, DeAndre Jenkins. Make sure DeAndre Jenkins, Grant Allen, and Andrew Ewing. Come on down. All right. I'm so proud of all of these student athletes representing Telahoma City Schools at such a high level. The future is bright, isn't it? Let's give them all a round of applause. And if you all will follow Mr. Birdsong's directions, so he can get a photograph of this group. We are proud of you.
We're always happy for you to join us, but the celebrations are over, so you may exit the room if you'd like to. We'll give you a second. Thank you so much. For the people that don't understand or aren't familiar with this, each of the school board members are assigned a school every year. All of the schools are all of our schools, and they're all very important to us, but in order to make it manageable to keep up with what's going on and attend events, we're just assigned a different school every year. And this is the time for us to give report, and it'll be a very short report about the things that have happened at the school or anything that the principal wanted us to share or that we wanted to share. And we're going to start with Telahoma High School. Sid Hill.
Awesome, and I promise you, there's three pages, but that's because I don't have my glasses on and I had to enlarge the font.
Okay.
But I want to begin by saying thank you to the Telahoma, the faculty and staff at Telahoma High School. Truly privileged to serve. As you're aware, the students have received numerous awards and recognitions throughout the school year, to include, of course, state championships and other different type of recognitions and awards, to also include academics, and so we appreciate that. When asked to describe the school year, Principal Quick said colossal. I can imagine that because of all the award that the school has received. The summer school, excuse me, during this summer, the parking lots are being resealed. The school is also installing a new door entry system, and we thank you for that, for security purposes. And the administration staff are working diligently to relocate teachers' classrooms to help with better alignment of departments, therefore allowing for more collaboration among the faculty and staff. Also, it was a great summer school. I almost said graduation rate, but completion rate, about 97%, I think it was 96.6. And last but not least, we are all going to give a round of applause to the fact that we have, or we're getting ready to have new tennis courts.
Yes, 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 yes.
When asked what is everyone looking forward to for the upcoming academic year, Principal Quick stated that the master schedule has been created so that all department members have time to do their planning period with their department, so within their department. There's also increased collaboration among the departments. When asked what is the one thing that you would like the board, the board to know, Quick stated that the freshman academy concluded this past school year, which means that the new incoming freshmen will be on the same schedule, thus allowing more academic offerings and opportunities. And I'm going to conclude by this, that Quick and I have a competition. We try to figure out who's going to offer the best reception for the faculty and staff, and I'm here to tell you that he won. He brought in a caterer, and it was wonderful. It was great to see all of the people there enjoying their efforts and works. That concludes my report.
Great, thank you. What a good, what a good year at Telahoma High School. And Sid, I need you to put your microphone on, please. Thank you. West Middle School, Amy Johnson.
I asked Cindy Herrera, what is the word that she would use to describe her 2021 or their 2021-22 school year, and she said the word was forward-looking. What's happening this summer is, let's see, we've got a list. Summer school for upcoming fifth through eighth graders. They are hosting professional development days for TCS and for the school librarians. They've got lots of basketball camps, conditioning, and game days for boys and girls teams. They've got the new basketball cheer coach. Laura Vaughn is working with the new team. They cleaned out the garden that's behind the school, and they're putting in a new foundation of dirt, she said, to be ready to plant in the fall. They are planning for upcoming CEO activities. They are planning great experiences for the 2022-23 school year, including social events, seminar dates, guest speakers, field trips, one o'clock exploratory days, and celebrations. And lastly, they are planning curriculum and professional development to keep growing the students while looking at this year's data. I asked her what she would say to the question about what might we not know that we should know already, and she said, "We have an amazing staff, incredible students with lots of potential, and the families of our students support our school." I asked her, "Would you like to share a humorous story or a profound, deep moment?" And she said, she gave me a couple of things. She said several of the CDC students this year have shared that they never knew that they could learn as much as they have. I thought that was awesome. And she said, "Today, I asked the summer school students if they were excited to go home for the rest of the summer, and most of them said they enjoyed summer school and that they would miss everyone." She concluded by saying, "It's all about building good relationships and having great communication."
Oh, excellent report from West Middle School. Thank you. East Middle School.
Okay, East Middle School was my school, and, excuse me, and being my first year on the board, it was a, it was a good experience, so I really kind of was feeling my way around a little bit, and Woody did a, did a great job. I'd go over there and visit him every now and then. He'd take me through the school and show me what was going on, and so I really appreciate Woody taking the time to, to spend time with me. I asked Woody, you know, what was, what was the one word to summarize the year, and in classic Woody fashion, he said, "Awesome." And so, so we had an awesome year at, at East Middle School. The successes during the year, East Middle School had a sixth grader win the state math contest, phenomenal, phenomenal achievement there. We also had a track athlete set a state record. We just celebrated that, even though she wasn't able to be here with us tonight. And then the basketball team won, won the conference and advanced to the sectional round. So, so a lot of athletic successes, but also academic successes at, at East Middle School. This summer, what's going on at, at East, of course, we have summer school, also focused on, on safety upgrades as well. The card readers and locks, I think some have been installed, I don't know if they're completed yet, but, but, but that's going on this summer. Also, Woody is updating the, the school's safety plan and completing a security assessment. From a maintenance standpoint, that's something I have to really commend Woody on, having, I've had three children go through East Middle School. I've spent a lot of time in East Middle School. East Middle School has a lot of challenges as far as from, from maintenance and the age and, and the HVAC system. I thought the school looked fantastic. You could tell that, that from a maintenance standpoint, we had put a lot of work into, into the school over the past few years, but still, there's some painting going on this summer on, on some of the rooms. Woody said if the paint arrives in time, that, that could be a challenge with the, with the supply chain right now. Stripping and waxing floors throughout the building, they're doing that. The soccer field is being top dressed, and then the gym floor is scheduled to be, be screened as well. What Woody's looking forward to for the, for the next year for at East is welcoming several new teachers. It's the second year he's going to have with the, with the full-time principal. I think Woody, Woody's really appreciative of, of that. New group of incoming sixth graders, so, so you have a new, a new stage for, for a lot of new students there. And he said hopefully some working water fountains too will, will be part of the, the 22-23 school year. One thing Woody would like us to know that maybe the board doesn't know was that they recently received some, some good donations and have ordered a new scoreboard for the gym. So, and that's my report.
Great, great report from East Middle School. Thank you. Okay, now we'll go to Robert E. Lee, and Amy Dotson's appointed school was Robert E. Lee, and she actually is in a workshop this week, so I'm representing, or I'm going to read Amy's report. This is from Amy, and because I, I just got to, I got out my son's Robert E. Lee shirt. He just graduated college, but I just, we might need to take a moment.
He's in pristine shape.
I know, it is. I mean, you know, it's just so cute. It was from the Great Pumpkin 5K. Yeah, he is, he was small, he's still pretty small. And this is what Amy Dotson has written. Robert E. Lee Lions are really excited about their summer camp. They feel everything is going great. One thing I love that they are doing is adding a communication board outside on their playground for students who are non-verbal or with very limited communication skills, so that they can communicate with their peers and staff while on the playground. I love the inclusion mentality that is at Robert E. Lee. Ironically, Mary Gilbert and myself are both attending this training this week, so it was great to briefly catch up with her during our early breaks today. Some wonderful things happening at Robert E. Lee. Thank you for that report. And now Teresa Lawson, East Lincoln.
Yes, my assigned school this year is, or has been, East Lincoln, and I always enjoy being assigned to East Lincoln because, as I've stated before, East Lincoln is just a little bit more special to me. I attended there. It's, I have happy, happy memories of, of East Lincoln, and each time I walk in, the kids are so happy, they're so well taken care of, they're loved, and I've got to say, Mr. Hargrove is probably the funnest principal in the system. No, not really, there, we have quite a few fun. But it's always a happy place to visit, and I just can't say enough about that. But at, at the same time, there's a lot of learning going on, and that's reflected in their test scores this past year and, and all the great things that they're accomplishing there. One word to describe, as I spoke with Mr. Hargrove, is one word, or Scotty, as I call him, is to describe the 21-22 school year is perseverance. And I think we can all shake our heads at that. Also, the summer happenings at East Lincoln have been serving 40-plus students in summer camp and reviewing security processes, and I think we're all doing that, and that's, that's such a great thing. What are we looking forward to during the 22-23 school year is the opportunity to grow our young learners academically, socially, and emotionally, and I think you're doing a fantastic job at that, Mr. Hargrove, you and your staff, and thank you.
Thank you. Great report from, from the Eagles Nest. Thank you, Teresa. And moving from the nest to the pond, Pat Welsh, Farah Frolgs.
Yes, this was Mr. Travis S. Moore, his first full year as, as principal at Farah, and I made, I don't like to call to let them know I'm coming, because I don't want them to spend any of their time getting ready for me. So I made five trips in August. He was unbelievably busy, and Ms. Colvin, I think Wendy Colvin is the receptionist there. We need to, I think some, at some point, recognize our receptionist. Every building is a really warm welcome, and they've got a lot on their plate to, to make sure they're following security measures and stuff, and she just, she was almost in tears the fifth trip when I couldn't get a hold of him, but we, we did make several successful trips over there, and he said, as it's been his first year, that there are probably two things that prompted him. One of them, the first one was that everyone was so special to him and making him feel welcome and, and helping him in his first year. His second tie, I guess, was that they had a parents picnic at the end of the year, which to him was really symbolic that we've got past COVID now and, and looking forward to being, have more gatherings and so forth, more of a community feeling. And I would like to finish by saying that if anybody thinks that their school is better than mine, I'm going to have to reply as Lee Corso at ESPN's College Football Game Day would by saying, first of all, "Not so fast, my friend," and then...
Oh, well done. Yeah, oh, yeah.
You get that, Zach?
Very good.
Can we redo ours next week so we can talk?
That's right, that's right. It's going to be a competition.
We have a Lee Corso in the mix.
It's going to be a competition. Great report from Farah. Thank you so much, Pat. My school this year was Bel Air. I had, I had the Walkathon shirt, but this one really shows up. And I'm going to share exactly what Dr. Epley shared with me, and he and I have had numerous meetings this year. The word, the one word to describe the 21-22 school year, successful. Absolutely love that. Through difficult times, he ended the year feeling it was successful. What maintenance things are happening at Bel Air this summer? Ceiling tiles, track, the track for the tiles, lighting, HVAC replacement, and roof replacement. So these things we've talked about for quite a while at Bel Air, they're going to make a huge difference in the school, so we are super excited about that. And what are you looking forward to for the 22-23 school year? Love this too. Family engagement activities, well, that have been large, that have been largely absent the previous two years, will return, which is exciting. And I know that all schools are feeling that, so Dr. Epley, thank you so much. It was a great year for the Bel Air Beasts. I also had the Tennessee Virtual Academy, and Dr. English answered the same questions for me, and I have spent quite a bit of time over there. First of all, it's just a really neat place to go. So it's, it's a very neat place to go. It's easy to stop by and easy to, to go into their little coffee area. One word to describe the 21-22 school year, discovery. Their very first year. It's really hard for me to believe when you're there that it was their very first year. I mean, to think last summer, they were just getting started, it's amazing. Any kind of maintenance project that's happening over there this summer, he's just expecting to see the baseboard installation in the CSS hallway, so not anything major. They redid their rooms there. Things are looking really good. As far as what is coming up, he had some great things to share. The 21-22 school year was truly a year of discovery. We knew that many classes would not work well as virtual options. Any course which required a significant hands-on component, component was suspect from the beginning. We expected chemistry to be a challenge. We learned that it is more than a challenge, it's a compromise. The same is true with higher math. Academically strong, motivated, disciplined students can be successful, but those classes are still a compromise without the presence of daily interactive instruction. Therefore, in 22-23, we'll be taking a step back in some areas to consider alternatives for higher-level courses. I believe we will find future success with a hybrid model of virtual and in-person instruction. TVA is doubling the number of students we serve. This past year, we limited total enrollment to 50 students. We have raised that cap to 100 students for the 22-23 school year. New this year is our American Sign Language program. Ms. Monica McGee from Maryville, Tennessee, will be teaching this course from Maryville or Merville, Tennessee. The ability to hire adjunct online teachers is a game changer for hard-to-fill positions. Finally, we're excited to partner with the CTE program at THS to see our mobile coffee shop, school-based enterprise project come to life. This project is primarily being funded by a $15,000 Telahoma Education Foundation grant. We hope to utilize every CTE specialty area as students design, modify, build, and outfit a concession trailer, then plan and implement their business plan for this unique work-based learning experience. And I think in just speaking with Dr. English this summer, of course, they're over there working, it's, the Telahoma Virtual Academy can be much bigger than anything I ever envisioned. I envision maybe they could offer a couple of classes, people could have hybrid, or they could take all their classes. There's really so much more that can be done, and so as it grows and continues, it's going to be great. So a round of applause for the Telahoma Virtual Academy. So a round of applause for the Telahoma Virtual Academy. A successful first year. So thank you all for giving your school reports and wearing your great stuff. Amy?
Is there any way that we could get copies of these reports? I would like, I mean, I can't remember everything that was said.
Well, I had lived a lot of my life.
I know. You have passed.
Sure. Anyone that has a report, if they want to send them to Amy, that would be great. Sure.
Okay, fine.
Thank you. And before we leave today, we're going to get Zach to get our pictures in our school shirts. And Pat, of course, you're going to have to wear the frog. Do we have any individuals to address the board on an agenda item? Okay, seeing that there's no one. Consent agenda. Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented?
Some move.
Motion by Teresa Lawson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Pat Welsh. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? Mrs. Vaughn?
That's all in favor, Chairman.
Thank you so much. Okay, we move on down to unfinished business. 22-23, gosh, that's hard to say, 22-23 school budget. It's, I can't believe it's here. Mr. Ray?
Thank you. Tonight's budget presentation is really a compilation of months of work by many employees at TCS. The proposed budget that you have in front of you for the fiscal year 23 school year includes the following highlights. A balanced general-purpose budget totaling $39,978,734. Compared to last year, this budget is a 5.66% increase excluding capital expenditures. Some of the revenue highlights that I'd like to point out...
Sorry there, Tim. ...that I'd like to point out is the city has projected an increase in the property tax line item that will affect TCS positively in the amount of $134,768 compared with the 21-22 budget year. The city has also projected an increase in the sales tax line item affecting Telahoma City Schools positively in the amount of $485,128 compared with last year's budget. And lastly, of the revenue highlights, the state BEP estimate is an increase in the amount of $1,152,000 or 6.33% over the current year. A few expenditure highlights include a step raise for eligible employees and a 5% cost-of-living increase for all employees. Additional positions that you have previously approved are included in the proposed budget. Monies for student device replacements that are needed due to end-of-life. And due to rising utility costs, the appropriate line items have been increased by an average of 7.2% compared with the year just ending. We have increased maintenance and repair of building line item to more closely align with prior year's expenditures. And the two buses that you all approved, I believe it was at the January meeting, will be included or are included in the FY '23 budget. Some noted capital or facility-related projects include the tennis court rebuild at the high school, HVAC replacement at East Middle, a new roof at Bel Air, and the resealing and striping of the parking lots at the high school. As always, should the final state BEP revenue calculations be different from the information that we currently have, we will make the necessary adjustments and come back to you for that approval. Thank you to the Finance Committee and the many members of leadership that provided input for this proposal for the coming year. And I respectfully submit this FY '23 general-purpose budget as an action item tonight. Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Ray. Do I have a motion to accept the budget as presented?
Some move.
Motion by Sid Hill. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Pat Welsh. Any discussion? Seeing there's none, all in favor, raise your hand, please. Opposed? Mrs. Vaughn?
That's all in favor, Chairman.
Very good. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Ray. FY 2021 audit results. Jason Ray?
Thank you. As annually required, TCS submits to an independent outside financial audit. As a municipal school system, the results of our audit are included as part of the city's annual audit. For the FY '21, which is July 1 of 2020 through June 30 of 2021, the city contracted with Householder Artman to perform the audit for all city entities, including TCS. The results of this audit are provided for your review as well as the management letter. I would like to draw your attention to the summary of auditor results, which is included on your page E5. This summary positively notes that there were no material weaknesses identified, no significant deficiencies identified, and no noncompliance material to financial statements noted. There were two findings reported in this audit by Householder Artman, and those can be found on your page E6. Finding number one, titled "Excess Expenditures." At the end of last fiscal year, I came to you to amend the budget, which is done annually. The error occurred in that after the board meeting was approved, excuse me, the board approved the amendments, those amendments were not made in the accounting software. This is an error that is my responsibility, and measures have been put into place for that not to happen in subsequent years. Finding two, titled "Audit Adjustments." This would require a twofold explanation. The first bullet point identified is related to our TCRS or Retirement Stabilization Fund. The auditor notes that the stabilization fund was understated. This occurred due to a new requirement that we were unaware of at the time. Now that we are aware, this will be booked appropriately. The second bullet point is due to the city-related debt service interest. The audit notes that the due to is understated by $33,419. This occurred due to receiving the invoice for the April, May, and June quarters' interest in late November after the close of the state-required annual reporting window. In subsequent years, I will contact the city to ensure we book these charges in the appropriate time period. We will continue to work to fine-tune our responsibility of ensuring we meet and exceed the requirements of both the state guidelines and independent audit requirements. I would like to take this opportunity to thank the accounting staff and all members of the Finance Department for their diligent work and careful consideration of the accounting standards, guidance from the state, and two suggestions from Householder and Artman. Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. Do I have a motion? You wanted a motion, right?
Yes, ma'am.
To accept the audit results as presented?
Some move.
Motion by Amy Johnson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Teresa Lawson. Any discussion? I just wanted to say how much we appreciate Mr. Ray and his office. And I've said this a number of times, but the transparency for which you run that department and the timely manner that we receive our monthly information is just greatly appreciated, greatly appreciated. Thank you very much. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? Mrs. Vaughn?
That's all in favor, Chairman.
Thank you so much, Mr. Ray. Very good. Building and grounds? EMS, HVAC, Mr. Ray?
Thank you. At our June 2021 meeting, Randy Malden from Trane made a presentation about what they provided related to energy services. From that meeting, we initiated a letter to proceed with a feasibility study of TCS buildings. Due to the time constraints of ESTER funding, Bel Air Elementary and East Middle HVAC assessments were prioritized. The results of this assessment noted that both Bel Air and East Middle needed modernization of their HVAC and control systems. This memo deals specifically with the proposed work at East Middle School. East Middle was originally served by a multi-zone, by a multi-zone system. The multi-zone system provided individual control at each zone. It accomplished this by mixing hot and cold air to produce the desired zone temperature. So in other words, one large unit served multiple zones. These systems are very custom systems and are costly to operate, both in energy and in maintenance. As those systems aged, the multi-zone systems were replaced with single-zoned package units. Currently, there are 12 large package units that are single zones serving multiple zones. Additionally, the units for the classrooms have no outside air, while the common space units are capable of bringing in outside air. In Trane's proposal, they would remove the existing rooftop units and replace them with new rooftop units. These new units will be equipped with hot gas reheat. The hot gas reheat allows for humidity control within the space. The units will also come equipped with natural gas heat for morning warm-up, include hail guards and economizers which would bring in outside air. They would also be equipped with a hinged panel for access to the inside of the unit. The ductwork in the gym will include a new fabric ductwork. The project includes the installation of 53 variable-air-volume boxes with electric reheat. This option uses true variable-air-volume rooftop units, and the system will be installed in zones where independent heating and cooling can be accomplished. Each zone would have its own temperature control. All units include a five-year parts and labor warranty from Trane. Accommodations will be made to disconnect and reconnect, as well as test the smoke detection system associated with the new units. Additionally, Trane will clean all the ductwork, including the supply and return vents. The sections of internally-lined ductwork from the discharge of each of the existing units will be cleaned and sealed or encapsulated to prevent insulation particles from breaking loose and blowing through the system. A new control system will be installed, which will provide control, troubleshooting capabilities, the scheduling of heat, AC, and ventilation. The control system will provide insight into zone temperature, outside air damper operation, energy usage, and will provide the ability to make changes from a computer. The quoted price is $2,526,443. I recommend approving the project as submitted by Trane for the HVAC system at East Middle in the amount of $2,526,443. The funding of this project will come from three sources. The remaining ESTER II funds of $305,582.27. ESTER III in the amount of $1,248,134.76. And from reserves, $972,726. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Ray. Is there a motion to accept the recommendation from Trane?
Some move.
Motion by Teresa Lawson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Andy Witt. Any discussion?
Got one question.
Yes.
I'm a little bit foggy on the timing, but we got a price on the ductwork cleaning that was separate. Is that amount in that 2.5 million?
Yes, it is. Okay. You cleared it.
That answers my question.
Okay, good. Any other questions?
No, I would like to say, though, that I think this is going to be very cost-effective and make a big difference in the building all over. So I'm really excited about this.
Good. Any further questions, comments? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? Mrs. Vaughn?
That's all in favor, Chairman.
Thank you so much. Great report. And thank you, continued thanks to the Maintenance Committee and everyone who worked so hard to stay on top of everything and continue to update plans and anything that comes up that's needed. Differentiated pay plan, Mr. Ray?
Thank you. Annually, staff makes recommendations to the board for the upcoming school year as required by the state. The staff makes the following recommendations for the 2022-2023 school year. TCS has identified a total of 19 positions throughout the system, meeting the state criteria for differentiated pay. 16 of those 19 positions are in the state-identified hard-to-staff area. Six of those 16 are speech-language pathologists. Seven are CDC teachers in the special ed department. One is a district school psychologist, and two are behavior modification teachers. The other three positions qualify in the instructional role category. These three are one fine arts coordinator and two behavior specialists. In your packet, I've included a brief history of the state initiative that I will not read verbatim to you, Madam Chair.
That's fine. Thank you. Do I have a motion to accept the differentiated pay plan as presented?
Some move.
Motion by Amy Johnson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Pat Welsh. Any discussion? Seeing there's none, all in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? Mrs. Vaughn?
That's all in favor, Chairman.
Thank you so much. Policy updates, Amy Johnson.
Okay. We have recently received updated information from TSBA regarding policies in our policy manual, and these are the result of legal and legislative changes. I'm not going to read and outline every one of them, but we have two that we want to accept as new, and they are Policies 4.402 and 5.119. And then the updates go to Policies, hold on just a second, 1.104, 1.105, 1.204, 2.806, 3.202, 4.101, 4.403, 4.406, 4.6, 5.200, 5.201, I'm sorry, 5.201, 5.701, 6.200, 6.318, and 6.409. Those are just the updates as presented. And the recommendation is that we update them, vote-update them tonight.
Very good. Thank you. Is there a motion to accept the new policies and update the additional policies?
Some move.
Motion by Andy Witt. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Amy Johnson. Any discussion? Just remember that the Policy Committee looks at the policies. Some are brought to us by TSBA due to legislation or just changes, and the Policy Committee looks at these in our work group. And then that information is sometimes sent back to TSBA, and sometimes it is sent to Clifton, and then it comes back to us, and it's scrutinized by whoever it affects the most. And it goes through a lot to get to us. And I always appreciate all the work that Amy, especially, and Sandy do on this. Any further discussion on the motion to accept the new policies?
It sounds dry as dirt, but it's fun.
It's dry.
You have an odd sense of fun.
Right, right, right.
I applaud you.
All those in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? Mrs. Vaughn?
That's all in favor, Chairman.
Thank you so much. New business? School calendar consideration? Dr. Stevens?
Yes, it was a pleasure to share with you all at the June 1st retreat about the school calendar process. This school calendar process is connected to the 23-24 school year calendar and the 24-25 school year calendar. It is interesting to note that this process started three months ago today. On March 21, we had training with 69 building representatives, roughly seven individuals from each school, that's teachers and paraprofessionals who participated. They went back to their schools and solicited feedback from their team members, those they represented, and sent that feedback to us at the district level. That feedback was all compiled and a district committee gathered. That district committee gathered on April 25, and that was comprised of parents, principals, teachers, support staff, and district personnel. All the feedback was looked at, and draft calendars for those two years were created in that group. After that, we went back to the building committee members around May 10 for them to see what had happened as a result of their feedback. They had the opportunity to review the drafts that the district committee created, and they made some more alterations. On May 13, a video was shared with all employees about the process. And on May 16, a survey was put out to all employees regarding calendar options. They had two options to choose from, from both of the school years, 23, 24, and 24, 25. On May 23, that On May 23rd, that survey closed, and to give you some statistics, we had 516 employees receive the survey via email. We had 263 employees complete the survey. That's an over 50% response rate, which is really high when you think about getting information back from individuals related to survey feedback specifically. And tonight, we will be presenting or recommending a couple of calendars for your consideration. First of all, the 23-24 draft calendar received a 79% approval rate from our teachers and staff. It is presented to you for board approval. If approved tonight, this adopted calendar will be posted on our website, and it will be emailed to all district employees tomorrow morning, so everyone will be aware of the 23-24 year calendar. So administration does recommend accepting the 23-24 school calendar as presented.
Okay, do I have a motion to accept the calendar as presented?
So moved.
Motion by Amy Johnson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Pat Welsh. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed, Mrs. Vaughn?
That's all in favor, Chairman.
Thank you so much.
And so the 24-25 school year calendar is very similar. That particular calendar received a 77% approval rate from our teachers and staff, and it's presented to you all for board approval this evening. While this calendar is a couple of years out, if approved this evening, it will also be posted to our website and emailed to all district employees first thing tomorrow morning. Administration does recommend accepting the 24-25 school year calendar as presented.
Very good. Thank you. Is there a motion to accept the calendar as presented?
So moved.
Motion by Andy Witt. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Pat Welsh. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed, Mrs. Vaughn?
That's all in favor, Chairman.
Thank you so much. Excellent. Meal, 2022-23 meal prices, Angela Cardwell.
And she is not able to be with us this evening, so Dr. Norris is here, our deputy director, and she will be sharing the presentation tonight.
So there will be no changes in the meal prices for the 22-23 school year. They're going to stay the same as they were in the 1920s school year. Bel Air, East Lincoln, Farah, and East Middle are eligible for the community eligibility provision, or CEPs, which you recall a lot. So that allows those schools to provide free meals to all of their students. The other prices, as I said, are going back to 1920. Breakfast at other schools will be $1.25. Lunch at Robert E. Lee is $2. West Middle $2.50 and $3.00 at the high school. That's the 1920 prices. The adult prices will stay the same as well. $2.25 for breakfast, $4.00 for lunch. And just to note, with the increases in supply chain issues, if that were to continue, prices are likely to increase in the 23-24 school year.
Dr. Norris, can you repeat those three schools at the beginning? The schools you referenced at the beginning?
The CEPs, yes. Bel Air, East Lincoln, Farah, and East Middle.
Oh, cool.
Very good. Any other questions? It's really remarkable to think that we're going to be able to keep those 2020 prices because everything is so expensive. It's so expensive. Thank you, and please thank Ms. Cardwell for us. Teacher tenure, Dr. Stevens.
Yes, this evening, we will be recommending six educators for tenure. As a reminder, to be eligible for tenure, an educator must have a degree from an approved four-year college and be licensed by the state of Tennessee. This license is based on preparation and training covering specific subjects, grades, and/or areas of expertise, have completed a probationary period of five years or not less than 45 months, and have received evaluations demonstrating an overall effectiveness level of above expectations or significantly above expectation, which is reflected in a score of four or five during the last two years of that probationary period. Once an educator is eligible for tenure, he or she either shall be recommended by the Director of Schools for tenure or non-renewed. If tenure is denied by the board, the educator shall be dismissed. The following educators are recommended for tenure. A supervisor will be sharing a bit about each one of them prior to administration recommending them for board approval. So first, I'd like to call up Dr. Epley from Bel Air. He will be speaking about Andrea Parks.
So Ms. Parks, she's been at Bel Air for several years now. She started out as a EA at East Lincoln in RTI. I'm glad she's a B. She is a wonderful team player. She's on a strong first-grade team. They play together routinely, and she's a strong part of that team as they play together. She has a lot of input on the new curriculum that we have with the ELA. In our building, she's a leader on the K2 end when we get to anything to do with dismissal. There's so many areas of the school day that are not anything that have anything to do with math or the ELA or social studies science. There's lots of functions and operations that take place that we have to pull together, have to do things that may be outside of what you might typically think a teacher does, and she has no problem doing. So Andrea's scores have been wonderful. She's a wonderful team member. I'm glad she's at Bel Air, and I hope that she'll give her tenure.
Thank you so much, Dr. Epley. I'd like to ask Mr. Hargrove to come forward from East Lincoln Elementary to share with us a little bit about Doris, DeeDee York.
It was an honor and a privilege to grow up with Doris, grow up with her.
We do not know her.
I was even wondering who this is.
That's why I had to throw in the DeeDee.
I call her Doris, and nobody has a clue what I'm talking about. I'm yours to take care of that. But growing up with DeeDee, one thing I always appreciated about DeeDee as a young person, her empathy and her huge heart. She was always a kind person. Now, fast forward some decades, and I mean some decades, as her administrator, she demonstrates it every day, even now, and she reaches kids that aren't so easy to reach sometimes. She's a great connector and has a huge heart for kids. She brought a ton of experience and skill to the craft of teaching to East Lincoln, and I'm proud to call her, I'm proud, I'm her principal. She brings a lot to the table, and she makes our classroom and our BPK over at East Lincoln a much better place. I recommend her without hesitation.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that. And Mary Gilbert, if you will please come forward from Robert E. Lee and share with us, and we've heard about this teacher recently, but share with us again about Tabitha Tucker.
Yeah, wow. It is such an honor to talk about Tabitha. She has been the Tennessee Schools Elementary Teacher of the Year and Robert E. Lee Teacher of the Year. Great teacher for Tabitha. But she brings so much to Robert E. Lee, just wow. She has such energy and passion and love, and we go into her room, there's no doubt, we talk about it so many times, number one love student, build relationships with them. Tabitha, that's number one on her list. We talk about keeping children safe. There's no doubt that that's where Tabitha is. And when you say that you do those things, the academics will come. And if you receive Tabitha's already data, wow, that's impressive. Some cute things about Tabitha, though, that I love is that she has a high energy level, and I think I shared this with you all earlier. You know, everybody's talking about how they love online shopping. Well, not Tabitha. She is shocked till you drop. And he said that that's her energy, and she loves it. Well, she brings that same energy into Robert E. Lee's classroom. She's ready, she's going, she's, you know, she's moving around, and she's excited, and the children have that. Had an opportunity to see her over the summer camp, and it is really, really special because the children cannot wait to come back. And that says a lot to me. When I walk in that classroom, Tabitha's over here, and there's a group of children over here, and there's a EA over here, and they're using manipulatives. So she has been engaged, not only with learning, but doing. One of the things that Tabitha shared with me, yet that started when she was young, and she had that experience of having a wonderful compassion and loving teacher who was a kindergarten. And she said, "Then that just continued." And she thought, "You know what? That's what I wanted. I'm going to be the one that continues that mother bonding and power stimulus." And she said, "I love that light bulb." You know, when that light bulb goes on, they start connecting, and then all of a sudden they become cool and rigorous, and making problems solve, and do the middle math." She just got excited telling me about this. But one of the quotes that I shared with you all earlier, I think it just sums up Tabitha. She said, "Teaching is my passion, and I truly wish that I get to spend all of my days teaching and learning children that interact with every single faculty. My goal in life is to impact at least one child each year as my teacher still is. And that just gives me cold chills when I look at that. I can't do Tabitha justice. She is amazing." So it is an honor to work with her and it is a privilege to recommend her to you this year.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that. And I'm going to ask Jason Quick to come forward from Telahoma High School and talk with us about Erica Duke Robinson.
I'm very pleased to submit Ms. Erica Duke Robinson to be forward for consideration for tenure in the alma mater schools. 2008 graduate of Telahoma High School, Erica has shown a tremendous heart for the students and community of Telahoma. Prior to transferring to Telahoma High School for the 2021 school year, Erica served as a history teacher at East Middle School after serving in both Wilson County Central and Colonial Central High Schools here in Tennessee. Since joining THS, Erica has established herself as a model servant leader for her colleagues and for her students. Moreover, her impact in the classroom has been outstanding, as she creates fun and engaging lessons for her history students that push them beyond, listen to this, push them beyond their own personal boundaries that they've established for themselves for learning. No matter the subject matter being taught, you can always count on her room to be vibrant and definitely full of happy lines. However, her impact on THS is much more than that of a teacher. Erica has shown an innate ability to create really meaningful relationships with her students that offers them a sense of comfort and reassurance that there is a place within Telahoma High School. She's often seen mentoring students in the hallways, the cafeteria, and other locations throughout the building. And for many students, she is the go-to person for anything they need. Likewise, Erica is seen as a tireless and passionately committed to the mission of THS by her colleagues. No matter the task or responsibility, Erica is quick to collaborate with others to develop innovative ideas and solutions to best meet the needs of our students. And if you don't believe me, let her organize a pep rally for you, and then sit back and watch the magic. We've been very blessed with her. She brings an awful lot of energy to our building, but she also brings an awful lot of ideas. She's wanted to run in my office and say, "Hey, Quick, have you ever thought about," or "Hey, could we do this?" Or "Hey..." And so she's always thinking of ways that she can better her alma mater, and it really shows. So I am very proud to bring Erica to you for consideration for tenure.
Thank you so much. And I'm going to ask Dr. Wendy Wilkerson to come forward and talk first about Bethany McKee, who is housed at the Community Services Building.
So thank you, I've shared about Bethany already, but if you don't, just let me know. I can go off there, or they do have it. So I'll just tell you about Bethany. Bethany is a no-excuses kind of gal. If there is a job to be done, she will do it without excuse. She's not afraid of getting her hands dirty. She is often the first face that our families see, often the first face that our youngest learners see. She's a necessity. We've got to have Bethany McKee. She's a lifelong learner. She has recently been accepted to a doctoral program with the University of Tennessee to further her education. She's very passionate about our youngest, most vulnerable students. As a special education coordinator, she also brings her previous high school teaching experience to those students and our educators, providing them the support that they need to help our students get ready to transition out of high school. So like I said, she is a necessity. We've got to have Bethany, so please consider her for tenure.
Thank you so much. And I'm going to ask you to remain, and I appreciate that our West Middle School principal was unable to be here this evening, to share with them about Blair Clanton.
Oh, Blair, yes. So Ms. Clanton definitely brings our district's mission statement to life. She definitely challenges her students there at West Middle with some of the most special needs to a limitless tomorrow. She doesn't limit her students. She doesn't let anyone else limit her students, but she does that in a very professional and a very kind manner. Ms. Clanton brings a lot of rigor to her classroom that we are always excited to have in classrooms of students who need highly qualified instruction. So I'm very excited about having Ms. Clanton, and I hope she'll stay with us a long time, so please consider her as well for tenure.
Thank you so much. So you all have heard about some amazing educators, Andrea Parks, DeeDee York, Tabitha Tucker, Blair Clanton, Erica Duke Robinson, and Bethany McKee. Administration recommends your approving these six tenure candidates as presented tonight.
Under one motion? As in, under one motion? So moved.
Do I have a motion to accept and approve the six tenure candidates as presented?
So moved.
Motion by Pat Welsh. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Teresa Lawson. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed, Mrs. Vaughn?
That's all in favor, Chairman.
And thank you all who shared about your teachers. Wow, I really hope they will go back and listen to what you said. It would mean a lot to them.
And we will communicate with each of those members through a letter and a phone call, sharing this good news with them.
Very good. Thank you. District insurance coverage, Jason Ray.
Thank you. Since at least 2013, the district's general liability coverage has been underwritten by Liberty Mutual and Workers' Comp by Key Risk and brokered by Public Risk Insurers. Our premium notice for the upcoming year from Liberty Mutual was an increase of more than $97,000. We additionally received a quote from Tennessee Risk Management Trust. We took the time to compare coverages offered between the two companies. Tennessee Risk Management provided higher coverage limits and/or less deductible on all but one of 20 lines. Tennessee Risk Management Trust is underwritten by Travelers Insurance, a longstanding, reputable worldwide insurance provider. Tennessee Risk Management's sole customer base are public entities within the state of Tennessee, and 102 of those customers are Tennessee school systems. In comparing prices on the general liability, Liberty Mutual quoted $279,761, while Tennessee Risk Management quoted $208,552. On Workers' Comp, Tennessee Risk Management quoted a premium of $141,413, while the current provider provided two companies for consideration. The current carrier quote was $169,974, and the secondary option was $101,243. In comparing the coverages and premiums offered, administration is recommending Tennessee Risk Management Trust for our district's insurance provider. The annual cost for general liability coverage is $208,552, and workers' compensation is If approved, these policies would go into effect on July 1 of 2022. I'd also like to thank both Tom Montgomery and Tom Stanley for being with us tonight. Madam Chair.
Very good. Thank you. Do I have a motion to authorize the purchase of district insurance for the 22-23 school year from Tennessee Risk Management Trust?
So moved.
Motion by Andy Witt. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Amy Johnson. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed, Mrs. Vaughn?
That's all in favor, Chairman.
Thank you so much. Thank you very much, Mr. Ray. Facility fee schedule, Jason Ray.
Thank you. Board Policy 3.206, which is community use of school facilities, states that the board will annually review a fee schedule and for the use of school facilities by community or civic organizations and other nonprofit, educational, religious, political, or philosophical groups. The fee schedule is attached for your review and approval, along with the facility use guidelines for your reference. Madam Chair.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the 22-23 facility rental fee schedule agreement? Rental lease fee agreement, sorry.
So moved.
Thank you. Motion by Amy Johnson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Teresa Lawson. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? Mrs. Vaughn?
That's all in favor, Chair.
Excellent, thank you. Board event calendar. The board event calendar is presented for approval. Do I have a motion to accept the 22-23 board event calendar?
So moved.
Thank you. Motion by Andy Witt, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Pat Welsh, any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? Mrs. Vaughn?
That's all in favor.
Thank you. And now, the 22-23 agenda items by month calendar. Do I have a motion to accept the agenda items by month?
You do.
Document, okay, very good. A motion by Amy Johnson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Sid Hill, any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? Mrs. Vaughn?
In favor, Chair.
Very good, thank you. And thank you, Mrs. Vaughn, for all the work that goes into getting all of that out and together and organized and keeping us organized. Coral risers, Jason Ray.
Thank you, ma'am. Currently, the THS choir program does not have an adequate number of risers for performances without borrowing additional risers from the middle schools. In our current situation, when risers are needed, maintenance transports the risers between the two middle schools and the high school. The need is for a total of seven sets of four-tier risers. We quoted AmTab Mobile EZ risers that had a back rail and charcoal gray carpeting. I obtained pricing from four vendors using the same set of specs. Of the four prices received, the lowest quote is from Integrity Furniture at a total cost of $17,525. This amount includes delivery. All vendors quoted an 18-week lead time. I recommend approving the purchase of seven four-tier carpeted risers from Integrity Furniture in the amount of $17,525. Madam Chair.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to accept that quote?
So moved.
Motion by Sid Hill, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Teresa Lawson, any discussion?
Good question, Jason. What is the warranty on those items?
I'm not sure that there is one. I'll be glad to check into that, but I didn't note that in my research.
Right. And I can...
Well, he's asking about a warranty, not a lead.
No, I'm talking about the lead time.
Mm-hmm. That's good. I cannot imagine how happy people are going to be, hopefully in a second, to not have to haul those risers around. By the way, how many of you have ever fallen off one of those risers?
The front or the back?
Yeah. I figured there'd be quite a few of us. All right. All in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. Opposed? Mrs. Vaughn?
That's all in favor, Chair.
Very good, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Ray. District reports, superintendents' reports, Dr. Stevens?
Yes, well, first of all, it feels so good to be back in this space. I've really enjoyed it. We had a packed house at first with lots of celebrations. I hope you noticed as you walked in, some beautiful black and white prints in some of the schools out in our front lobby. We are continuing our little touches, but it certainly feels good and really thankful that we're continuing to move along in that regard. So you know, while the school year ended May 20th, summer continues here, and we have summer learning at all seven of our brick and mortar campuses this year. I've had the pleasure of visiting all of them and observing our students. The biggest takeaways for me are the smiles on everybody's faces, young and old, the experiences that they're having, and the small numbers. The intention of summer camp is really about intervention and closing gaps, and so when you have small numbers, you've got successful opportunity before you. So I've been very pleased with that, so that's been fun. We had a special visitor, Commissioner Schwinn, and Riley the Reading Raccoon was here at East Lincoln to see one of our summer camps there on the statewide bus tour. So we had a great visit, watching some stream activities, reading activities, and math activities. Who knew the Reading Raccoon could actually do math and count on fingers and toes and everything? So we just had a great time. Kudos to everybody at East Lincoln for that wonderful visit. As you know, before long, because we're not going to gather again until August, we're going to blink, and we're going to be back in the school year. Our secretaries return July 18th, our teachers and staff the 25th. We've got convocation the 25th with a tremendous speaker that all of you will remember from the TSBA convention, Dr. Brown. He will be opening up our school year, and I am over the moon excited about his visit. So we look forward to our first day of school with our students August 1st. And again, as a reminder, no board meeting in July. Madam Chair.
Thank you so much. My glasses. Although this is the last scheduled board meeting for the 21-22 school year, the board's work is not done. Over the summer, we will continue to update policies, scrutinize budget, prioritize maintenance schedules, complete updated director's evaluations document, et cetera. All meetings of board work groups are posted. I hope you all have a great summer, as shared by each board member about their appointed school. It was a great year. We have much to celebrate and even more to look forward to. Thank you all so very much. City Board Liaison Report, Rupa Blackwell is not here tonight, and she had, did try to call me today, and we were not able to connect, and I bet she was giving a report. So if there's anything, I may just send a little message out to everyone. Personnel Report, Dr. Stevens?
Yes, the personnel changes for June were presented to you all in an attachment.
Thank you. Monthly Financial Report, Mr. Ray.
Thank you. You have in your packet the fiscal year '22 report through the end of May, and at that point, a great note is that we had received greater than 100% of the budgeted property tax with obviously still a month to go to collect. Sales tax through the month of May was up 11.94% in comparison to the same point in last fiscal year. We are anticipating one more BEP payment this month, and we have received 100% of our city appropriations. On the expenditure side, we're in a very good spot to be the last month of the fiscal year, and obviously, we are attempting to wrap up some projects to get those in the year that they're, they should be paid for. And when we come back to our next meeting in August, we will have those budget amendments for the year just about to complete, so thank you, Madam Chair.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Ray. Is there anything else to come before the board? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion by Sid Hill, is there a second?
Second.
Second by, second by just everybody, but we'll go with Amy Johnson. Are y'all eager?
Anybody done?
Is there any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? Mrs. Vaughn?
That's all in favor.
Being adjourned. Thank you all so much.